It's better than what's been happening.
Okay, we're live and recording. You should have gotten a notice.
Okay, great.
We are ready.
I have 5:30, so we'll call the meeting to order. Liz sent us a new update from the governor, and because of that, what I would like to do is, first of all, introduce any outside guests that we have. Andrew Jones from the Daily Times is here. Any other outside guests?
Hi, I'm Kathy Ross and I'm a grad student at UT and a current intern at Blount County Public Library. Thanks for having me tonight.
Great, we're glad to have you. Thank you for being here.
Yes.
According to the new update, we are able to do this on Zoom, but it has to be recorded. And so what I need to have each of you do is introduce yourselves who are trustees and say who you represent. So I'm Andy Simon, the chair, and I represent Maryville. So jump in there, Lauren, or anybody, just jump in and...
Okay, I'll go. I'm Kathy Hammond. I represent the county, Blount County.
I'm Logan Hill. I represent Alcor City.
I'm Jesus Ortega, and I represent the county.
Hey, I'm Lauren Emmert, and I represent the county.
Do we have anyone else? Any other trustees? Okay.
No, that's it.
Thank you very much. I hope all of you have read the minutes of the last meeting. And any questions on the minutes? Do I have an approval? Last meeting.
Andy, do you want to bring the correction up?
Yeah, well, I had one correction on the statement.
H3?
Yeah. I reported on a meeting that I had with a contractor talking about the pavilion and the costs and minutes reflect a contract individual rather than a contractor, should be contractor. That's a minor change.
Okay, well, with that one change, I put forth a motion, we accept the minutes.
Thank you. Is there a second?
Becca? Logan Hill.
Thank, Logan, thank you. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? The minutes are accepted. We'll move on to my report. I have several things that I'd just like to touch base with you, and you can ask any questions if you want.
Andy, can I interrupt you just a minute? Dawn Reagan just joined us. If you want to get her to introduce herself?
Yep. Sorry, hi Dawn. Because of the new COVID rules from the state, would you please introduce yourself and who you represent? Since we're doing this live, and it will also be on audio, and so they need to know who's on the board.
I am Dawn Reagan. I represent the county commission.
Great, thank you. Okay, we're moving on to my report. I had a few contacts during this last month, and number one was with the Maryville Utility Board. When I was talking to Casey and a couple of the maintenance people, realized that our electrical usage, while it has reduced, been reduced greatly by the lighting, new lighting, which is great, and good going on that library and staff. But we are also on a demand basis with no way to determine what our demand is. So I contacted the Maryville Utility Board, Steve Davis, and they came out and replaced our meter and gave us a metered, which actually tells us what our demand is every 15 minutes. And so at the end of November and in December, we'll be able to print out information that tells us which period of the day is the highest demand. We could adjust our lighting, our demand schedule for electricity based on that. So that was the nice thing. Steve also said that he found a... I just did something to my computer, so I can't see anything.
I'm glad I'm not the only one who does that. I occasionally lose the Zoom screen. I'm like, what? Where'd it go?
Andy, we can see you.
I got it.
Yeah.
So anyway, they came out. They also found a tree that was affecting our power lines, and they said the city would cut it down for us. And Casey, I don't know, did you...
They did. Yes, they haven't replaced the water meter yet, but they did. The tree is down and everything's cleaned up.
They did not place the meter?
Not yet, no, it's still the...
It's not water, it's electrical meter.
Oh, the electric meter?
Yeah, it's replaced.
Yeah, okay.
And what we'll get is, it's a digital circular printout that tells you every 15 minutes the demand that the library has, and then we're charged for that 15-minute period for the entire month for the highest point in any one day. And we're charged for that, so we just want to make sure that we're doing that well. Also talked to Susan Braden at Blackberry Farms for their foundation, and she sent a form to Casey to fill out for hopefully either the pavilion or Wi-Fi, Wi-SkyFi, or anything else in the future. We'll see what's happening there. We'll update you that later on. Then I also talked to John Willbanks, who's with the Blount County Land Conservancy, and they have been meeting in somebody's house. And so I asked them if they wouldn't start meeting at the library, and I think they had their first meeting just this week or last week, and we'll be hopefully meeting in the future at the library. And I would encourage any of you, any library staff or board members or anybody else, if you know of anybody that's having meetings, the library is now an incredible place thanks to the foundation and the library staff updating our meeting rooms. So we have really great, great meeting rooms with terrific sound and TV and everything else available. So it's a great place to meet. Also talked to Joe Huff, who is the head of Parks and Rec. And what we were talking, what I was talking to him about is, I've walked through the library several times, and I noticed the Blount County Sports Hall of Fame. But I would like to see the Sports Hall of Fame being more a part of the community and the library. And what I would like to do is feature it a little more. And Andrew, I'd like to get the newspaper involved also a little more than once a year. And I'll be talking to you in the future about that. But Joe was happy to hear that. They have a lot of old tapes, VCRs, and things that I think we can convert and have them online or available on TV so that people who come in and look at the Hall of Fame can watch it. And just another reason to come to the library and be a part of Blount County. So that's my report, and I want to thank the library and the library staff and maintenance people for the incredible job they did on the latest elections. The lines, if you were there or tried to vote, were three-quarters of the way around the building at times, and everyone just handled it beautifully. And so thanks, Casey, and thanks to the library staff for you all for what you've done, that it was great for Blount County.
We were happy to do it.
Okay, moving on, that was my report. Casey, if you will, before Casey's report, or any questions on Casey's report, starting in January, I would like to have Casey read the report since everything now has to be recorded. And obviously, people who tune in or read or listen to our meeting afterwards would not be able to know what's in the report, so I would like to have her read it into the minutes. So Casey, go ahead.
Not now, though, right?
No, not now, no, no.
I'm happy to. I'll just point out just a few things. I did give y'all a little information. We've added Canopy, which is, I don't know if you're familiar with it, but it's a streaming video service, and it's full of classics and documentaries and movies. The content deals with timely topics, so it's going to lend itself to a little bit different audience than Hoopla will. And it's an excellent service. I hope that y'all will check it out. Also, this is November, so this is Nanoramo Month, and we always have, usually we have in-person writing days. The goal of Nanoramos, does everyone know what it is, what Nanoramo is? It is a, it is the National Novel Writing Month is what Nanoramo stands for. And the challenge is to write 50,000 words in a month towards your novel. So we typically would host writing sessions every week, like on Sunday afternoon or Saturday afternoon, with some coffee and some nibbles, and people would come in and they would just write. But we're not able to really do that, so we had Hannah Riles, who is a YA author, who published her first novel, Ascension, which is urban fantasy. She did a Zoom writing workshop. Was it this past Saturday? Do y'all know when it was exactly? I, I kind of lost a few weeks with my illness, so I don't know what was going on. I don't know exactly when it happened, but anyway, it was attended by eight people, which is an excellent turnout for a Zoom writing workshop. And then we are doing Wednesday prompt, writing prompt Wednesdays through social media. And so I gave you a couple of examples of that. The rest, oh, the additional security cameras have been installed, and if you come by the building, you'll see that the trees, the landscaping is being seriously trimmed. And this has needed to happen for a long time. Those holly bushes are supposed to be bushes, not trees. And the back hedges where the trees are like over the roofs of building, I mean, those are supposed to be hedges, you know, like, you know, six-foot hedges. So they're really working on getting all that knocked into shape, so don't panic when you come by and go, "They've cut all the trees down."
Do they have any berries on them?
No. But anyway, so if you come by and it looks like it's been whacked, it was done with intent.
Casey, I had a quick question for you on that Nanoramo.
Nanoramo.
Which one in the picture is Spooky Steve?
Oh, now that is from Spooktacular. Remember last month's report? I told you that that the library would have a booth for the, you know, it was the, it used to be, it's usually a walking tour in downtown Maryville where the vendors come out and they have tables and kids trick or treat all up and down. Well, they did, it was drive-by this year at Foothills Mall. And so Jennifer and Beth were the staff members there, and they took Spooky Steve as Alice. So it was, and it was very successful. Apparently, that was a really good event.
If you happen to go through the library, look for, is it Dr. COVID or whatever his name is? He seems to turn up in different places.
Our pandemic doctor?
Yes, he's great. I love him.
Steve, hey, look, there he is, right there. He's in reference. You see? Ari's working the desk tonight, and so there he is. There's Dr. COVID right there. Yeah, Spooky Steve. People love Spooky Steve. You know, he shows up in weird places. What? Oh, yeah. And kids actually come in and go, "Where's Spooky Steve?" All right, the camera system has, the installation is finished, and M3 technology, the installation is this week for the Dorothy Heron Room. So we're extremely happy about that. Any questions about any of the other items in my report?
Just taking note of your, you know, giving us fair warning about the January 9th retreat that was in there. And, you know, I guess we should all get that on our calendar, huh?
Yeah, it's on, it's an action item on the agenda.
Oh, okay.
But I wanted, I just, you know, we started talking about how we were going to really look at the budget and building in sustainability. We realized that, you know, with COVID and all of the changes in how we provide service, it's an opportunity to really revisit our structure. And so we sort of felt like it wasn't going to be enough for me, for us to give y'all a budget to look at and vote on. We needed to have a workshop so we could talk about any shifts in goals, how we're going to incorporate the extra level of virtual services where the board thinks the priority should be. So we decided it would be good to have a workshop and give the board our ideas, and that'd give y'all time to go away, think about it before you have to make any decisions.
Casey?
Yes.
Thank you. I wanted to also thank you. I love the notable outputs. So having that Lynda.com, the Hoopla, the Reed Circulations, all those, you know, the awesome programs that we have that the library offers for the general public, especially during the pandemic right now. I love to see that they are being used and that, you know, word is getting around. I'm a big, you know, advocate of, you know, online learning, and this is awesome how the libraries have been transforming. And, you know, this is a perfect example of during this pandemic, how amazing it is to have such an awesome library. So thank you for adding that, and I hope that we can continue to expand the word. Then, you know, we have a lot of benefits, though you might not feel comfortable going to the library in person.
Right, well, I just, I just want to take the opportunity to build on what you've said and plug my staff and plug county IT. Because the, I don't know if y'all realize it, but the library was only closed, as in not providing services for one day. One day.
Which is amazing.
The very next day, everyone went homes, the phone services and all the online support started programming immediately went into the virtual arena. PR immediately started PR and where to go to find those resources. And y'all, there aren't many libraries that were able to turn on a dime like we did. There are very few, and it's because the staff are awesome. Whatever we pay them, it is not enough. Going to say.
That is true, but Casey, explain Lynda.com for me.
Okay, Lynda.com is, it is a training. It's a database that provides primarily tech-focused training. Okay, so you can take a class, let's say, in how to use Google Apps. Okay, so there could be an entire series of classes, maybe, you know, 30 hours, but it's in little bits, so you learn, you can go through, and you can listen to videos, and there's activities, but you can pick out one part. You don't have to complete the whole thing, but you can complete the whole thing. My, I like to use my experience with the University of Tennessee migrating from blackboard to canvas as their online teaching platform. While I wasn't teaching during the time, so I wasn't paying attention because I was off in my world, and I got ready to put my class up, and there was no blackboard. It was canvas because I'm last minute Lucy here. And so I had, literally, I had Lynda up on my iPad, and I had with the class on how to use Canvas, and I had Canvas open in my account at the school, and I was going through setting up my class on the site as I went through the lessons, and I was never so grateful in all of my life to have access to Lynda to help me get through that initial setup. It would have been hard for me to figure it out.
In the case, it's a membership proposition. Do you have to sign up to get on to Lynda.com?
You have to have a library card, and then you have to set up, you have to set up a little account, and you don't want to forget it, because if you forget it, you have to call Lynda and get your password reset. We can't do it for you. But Ari has put in the comments, so if y'all want to know a little more, it's full of design, education, and marketing information as well. It's owned by LinkedIn, so it is, you get certificates when you complete the classes. You can get CEUs depending on what you need.
It's actually changed its name to, I guess, Lyndon Learning?
That could be.
Left-hand learning. It's LinkedIn Learning now.
Yeah, LinkedIn Learning.
Right, yeah, okay.
I keep going.
I tried to get into it. I'll just say what was going on.
Okay, you know, what you need to do, Logan, is you need to call the library and get someone to just walk you through it via the phone, or set up a meeting, and they'll zoom you through it.
Okay, that'll work.
Okay, and it's so much easier than trying to figure it out on your own.
Okay, good idea.
I have to put in the plugin in there that, you know, it also, it's a very professional, as a professional, you can get so much from there. Any updates to Microsoft, you can go there. So I think that's something that, you know, I know here in the city, that's something that we pass around, you know, as a great benefit that our library offers us, because it's not like that everywhere. And you really, you can pay hundreds of dollars for a training, or you can, you know, get a library card if you don't have one, and, you know, take this for free. So it is definitely...
And the nice thing, the nice thing about it, like the county, all the county IT people had Lynda accounts, and when we added it, they were able to stop their purchase and move their account over to our window, so they didn't have to lose anything.
Good.
Any other questions for me? I have to say, my facilities team has done a whole lot of wonderful work this month. They've been very, very busy and done really good things. I am very grateful for them.
It's been great. My Zoom has gone out, and again...
We can see you.
You can see me? Okay, I can't see anybody, so...
You just, it just went away. It went behind whatever you got up.
I didn't get up.
You don't have anything else on your screen?
No. Well, yeah, I have my settings on my screen, and that's it.
Your what? Oh, what about, is the Zoom button at the bottom, the blue button on the bottom of your menu?
I've hit it, and I've hit my Zoom cloud meeting too, and nothing's going on. But anyway, if you can hear me, we'll keep going.
We can see you. Yeah, we can see you and hear you, so it's all good.
Okay, good. I just can't see anybody. Okay. One of the things that I want you to just talk about for a second is on the financial report, the actual revenues that are, we have versus what is budgeted and what we're actually generating, which is okay, but, you know, it's really sad. So if anybody has any really good ideas, I'm sure you're open.
Oh, absolutely. You know, we really, we're really going to have to look, so I hope y'all are putting your thinking caps on for...
That's one of the reasons for January.
Yeah, for how we can, because, you know, it's not, it's not, I don't necessarily think we're going to go. We have to figure out other ways. I really feel like when it, when the board gets around to making a decision about fines and fees, well, fines specifically, I think it's going to be very difficult to put the fines back for overdue materials. The way that, the way that it works is that if someone checks out materials and they don't bring them back, they can't check it anymore unless they pay for the materials. So we're still going to get our materials, or we're going to get money for them, but we're just not going to charge overdue fines on top of it because it is the people that are marginalized that, you know, just can't come up with $150 in fines because they have three kids, and each kid checked out, you know, 10 books and three DVDs, and they kept them for two months. They're bringing them back, but that fine is very prohibitive. So, and I think, I don't have the data right off the top of my head, but we're getting our materials back. Our materials are coming back during this time. So people are so grateful to have the service and to be able to access, especially movies, especially movies, that it's, it's kind of changed the dynamic and feel of how the library provides service. But having said all that, I feel like how we want to look at revenue generation moving forward is going to be something the board really needs to consider. And there are a lot of things to consider about it. I'll go into that, you know, as we prep for our workshop. But just thinking about the library, how it works within the community, and, you know, the terms that need to be on the front of your thought process is digital equity and digital inclusion. Because there is no other institution in the community with a mission that has, you know, we're supposed to be providing digital inclusion, and we're supposed to be working toward ensuring there's digital equity. And now we are doing what we can do, but we could do more. We could do a lot more. So that is at the forefront.
Could you expand on your definition of those two terms?
Okay, digital inclusion is everyone having access to high-speed internet, to computers, and to the skill sets needed to use technology. Digital equity is applying that across all the populations in your community. You know, the populations that are hit the hardest right now are marginalized populations, African-Americans, Hispanic, people in the poverty and Alice levels. That is getting the hardest hit, and, you know, I looked at the latest study that came out. It's urban, people that live in urban areas are having more of a problem accessing than people living in rural areas because of money. You know, one of the, one of the data points that unemployment statistics don't take into account are people that are self-employed. They're not part of that bank. You know, if you have a landscaping business or you're a sole proprietor and you are not working, that is not part of unemployment. So I think about all the people in our community that are self-proprietors that are struggling or have no work because of COVID, because of what they do keeps them out of working with people. It's so much bigger than what it looks like on paper.
So what are the metrics being used to determine this?
Which, which this?
This, I reach, our reach or our lack of reach? I mean, how do we verify and quantify that information?
Well, I mean, we don't do it. It's done, it's done by the state and through the census and through the telecoms who provide service. I mean, there's a whole lot of different entities out there that gather the data. Plus, we know because we just know who comes in to use our services and who's out in the parking lot and who's sitting in a lawn chair outside of the building. You know, our community's not that big. So, I mean, Logan, I can pull that information together for you if you would like to have it much easier than I...
I'm just trying to understand, you know, as we try to put our arms around that, what information has been, you know, drawn in and exchanged?
Yeah, the Census Bureau just put something out on their newsletter, their weekly newsletter, about 14% of households in the United States do not have high-speed internet nationally. So, you know, that's pretty big.
The numbers are actually, we just did a study at the Chamber, the numbers are actually much higher in the city of Alcoa. much higher in the city of Alcoa than what we thought.
Oh, yeah.
And particularly, it's really affected children that would like to learn virtually, but just didn't have the opportunity, just didn't have Wi-Fi. Um, we knew the county, we knew the county was, you know, limited, but just Alcoa really shocked us.
But theoretically, aren't they, aren't the schools providing hotspots for all those kids that, that don't have, uh, internet, uh, capabilities?
I don't think so.
Yeah. Yeah, some of, they're, they are working for it, but you know, resources are limited and also just kind of what Casey said on educating the parents on just how to turn on the Wi-Fi. And the computers, uh, the Knoxville Chamber had to set up a hotline and walk parents through all those steps. So there's a, there's a real big issue on just utilizing it as well, education around it.
There are still large chunks of Blount County that don't have Wi-Fi access. They're trying to get to it, but they still don't have it. That's one of the reasons that I think our SkyFi plans for the future are so important.
Our, our hotspots are, are out, they're out constantly. They don't, they don't ever sit in.
Okay, can we move on?
Yep.
Any more questions?
I, I, if y'all aren't looking, if y'all aren't looking at the chat, um, Lauren, I ask, can you, can you share those numbers with me? Because I really need them for, um, some other work that I'm doing, possibly grant-related. Um.
Yeah, I can share them with you. They're part of a larger report that we're working on that we haven't, um, published, but I'll definitely share them with you. A lot of them come from this, from the census, like you mentioned.
The census, if y'all, if y'all really want to know what's happening, the census has started doing a newsletter, um, email newsletter that comes out once or twice a week that hits different data points and it's got a lot of really good information in it. Um.
Rob said that, that, Rob Spurko said that, um, United Way has a report on this.
Well, on Alice, and yeah, I have shared that with y'all. We talked about Alice data, um, three or four meetings ago.
Right.
Um, but yeah, I mean, this is, it's just like, you know, I think what I want the board to take away from this conversation right here is that while we've been thinking about, you know, how to stay afloat and keeping our employees safe, um, which has been, you know, my big stressor, uh, we still, we, we inadvertently became part of um, frontline, um, provider during this crisis because of what we already do. But what we do isn't enough and moving forward, I mean, COVID just pushed us into the virtual world and it's not gonna go away. It was coming anyway, just happened quicker. So, um, focusing on digital inclusion and then digital equity is at the forefront of what the library should be doing. And, and you do it in partnership, you don't do it in isolation. Um, everything I've read about what, what is working is partnerships between government, the schools and the public library. It takes all three and it takes the coordination are building on what's happening between the three, um, the three, uh, institutions.
Okay, but, but let's move on.
All right, that was my first part of the.
Thank you, Casey. Angela's not here, is that right?
Yeah, no, uh, and they, she didn't have anything to report and she's giving a present, she's, she's teaching a, in a class tonight, so.
Okay, that, that, that's for our foundation board. And I do want to thank them for finishing off our, one of our meeting rooms. And so we are, both meeting rooms are ready to go and are, are being used. It's great. Uh, Bruce, you've always got great things going on. So you have a report for us?
Uh, yeah, I'll, I'll take a few minutes.
Friends of the library.
If I can, for the friends. A couple highlights I wanted to make to you is one, our donations continue unbelievably strong. I think we at one time estimated we were getting something like four thousand books a week and that just doesn't let up. It is constant and, uh, if we don't keep those bins empty, they overflow. Um, for the sales, in the sales area, we have three, three main areas. The eBay, the basement sales, the, and the community market. Uh, let me go through those rather quickly. One of the strongest points we have is eBay. eBay for the second month in a row has made over eight thousand dollars for the.
Fantastic.
They, this, this little gem that they have found of, of peddling, uh, unwanted paperback books. Them has turned out to be a gold mine. Um, and we were making a thousand to twelve hundred dollars a month off these cheap paperback books that we, we bundle into packages of fifteen to twenty books and sell them for twenty, twenty-five dollars or whatever. We get a lot more money for those books and they are, they're a sizable contributor. We have a whole team. Now, I think maybe three people working just on paperback books.
Never underestimate the power of a Harlequin romance.
Bruce, let me, let me interrupt you for a second. You, do we see if we can get Andrew to give us a plug in the paper for, for donations? Or, or are you overcome already? Are you overrun?
Is that a question to me?
Yes.
Oh, uh, no, we are, we're, you know, we, we, uh, you know, we, we enjoy and will take, uh, we'll, we'll, you know, we'll continue to take donate. We, we will turn them around and, and sell them as best we can.
Andrew, can we get, Andrew Jones, can we get any kind of a, of a plug out of the newspaper for, for the friends' books now? For used books?
Andrew said he's a guest.
Yeah, he says, sure, just have someone write me something.
All right.
On same tag. You're it.
The basement sales, uh, before the pandemic, we used to have quarterly sales. Um, we, we went into a period of time when we were doing weekly somewhat downscaled sales. But, uh, we discontinued the weekly basement sales in, um,
Thirty-first.
Of October. And we're now doing sales once a month. We're calling them our second Saturday sale. Um, and we had one in November, uh, last weekend. We did pretty good. We, we sold something like twenty-three hundred dollars. We're expecting, um, probably the Christmas sale to be another strong one, which I think is December twelfth. But, um, we, we have, we're, we're still learning on how to handle maybe a little larger number of people, how to handle the increased flow, but we're, we're gonna get there and, uh, we figure it'll probably be another six months or, or so before we can talk about going back to the old quarterly sales. Um, and, and we, we are, um, probably also somewhat constrained on just the number of volunteers that it takes to put those basement sales on. Takes a lot of work and a lot of volunteer work. Uh, the community market sales, we've had out on the front lawn. Uh, we're also done at the end of October. We do have a holiday market coming up this Saturday from ten thirty to two. Um, that'll be out in the, the lawn again and we'll have a variety of vendors at that. But, uh, that will be our last lawn sale of the year. Uh, just as a couple of side notes, I'm still having bi-weekly meetings with all here as we can assemble on Tuesday morning. And, uh.
Sorry, sorry about that. I think they're still advertising for the election.
Oh. Um, so I, I still have bi-weekly meetings with volunteers, uh, and I learn a lot, they learn, learn a lot, we're able to exchange a lot.
Andy, if you mute, we won't hear that.
So it's gone.
Okay.
Sorry.
And, and the, the other thing I'll mention is, uh, uh, I have a weekly meeting with Angene. We trade a lot of information and ideas. Angene has always, has been quite cooperative and informative. And we both look forward to having that exchange, uh, every week. That's my report. We're, we're still, and, and the other good news is we did a study, uh, um, a month or so ago and we found that over the last six months, we're within hundreds of dollars of making the money that we had from the olden days through, as compared to the pandemic. Uh, and of course, the big contributor has been eBay to that. But we're still, still money for the library.
Bruce, thank you. Congratulations to you too. Friends just do an incredible job. And the markets were fun. I'm glad to hear that you're having another one. It's always fun to come to it. I hope all of the board members and everybody else gets to come visit. It's a, it's a fun place to go.
It also helps our, um, local entrepreneurs that people that are struggling to get their wares out, it gives them a venue, which is one of our, um, mission items.
Okay, moving on. Liz Shrek from our regional director.
Hello.
Report for us, anything exciting going on?
I do, um, can you all hear me okay?
Yes.
Okay, great. Um, so I sent the report, I emailed it to everyone, um, for November. Um, we are proceeding with our training calendar. Um, and our next training that we have offered to our member libraries is gonna be a youth services roundtable, uh, using PLAY to develop multiple literacies. And that's December the seventh, and it will be all virtual. And we have some, um, some of our, our member libraries, uh, staff members that are gonna be putting that on with, with our assistant director, Nikki Brandon Snyder also. So we're looking forward to that. Uh, January, right now, we have, um, I say right now because as, like all our libraries, we're always looking at, uh, situations. Um, so right now we have the next training scheduled, um, it will be a Tennessee Electronic Library Genealogy, uh, resources in, in service. And so we're excited about that mid-January. That will also be virtual. Um, basically just, you know, continuing to update our COVID nineteen live guide page that's on our state library and archives, um, live guide pages, uh, section on our site. Um, we have been submitting, of course, the standard survey analysis. Um, CARES Act funding is out, um, to our libraries. Um, of course, I shared with you all the executive order sixty-five that extended the allowance for electronic meetings, um, from Governor Lee, uh, through December twenty-seventh, I believe, is that, that date. And if that changes, of course, I'll continue to update. Uh, that's one of the things we're trying to keep up with and let our libraries, library boards know about. Um, we are also going to be, this is just on the horizon for us, for school readiness training. Um, we received a grant from IMLS in the Bay Area Children's Museum for, um, some of our state libraries staff members to receive, uh, training and then provide that to our member libraries. So we're looking forward to that. Um, we have tentatively set, of course, our member libraries in our region to receive that training, uh, on, in April. So, um, so we're excited about that. Um, we're working through annual documents. I emailed right before this meeting the approved, um, and finalized maintenance of effort form, uh, to Casey and Angene and Kathy, so they have that for their records. Um, other than that, uh, you see the reads, um, the Regional EBIC and Audiobook Download System, uh, statistics. Um, we continue to do, I think, pretty well, um, as a region. That's certainly a popular, that of course is the program where anyone with an, uh, library card in good standing can, um, obtain uh, ebooks and audiobooks and streaming video through this Tennessee State Library, uh, the Tennessee State Consortium. And that's it.
Liz, are there any particular areas in the state that are hard hit? I mean, any libraries that are hard hit because of the COVID epidemic?
No, I mean, you know, I, you can check the, of course, um, the state has their COVID nineteen dashboard, um, to be able to see the numbers on a daily basis. Uh, I don't, I, I don't have any in particular that, that I've noticed for particular areas, but yeah, in general, um, we're encouraging, of course, and it's on the COVID nineteen live guide page, we're encouraging all of our libraries to just continue to check CDC regulations, continue to, you know, keep up with the numbers in their communities and make decisions and have their library boards make decisions about how to handle, um, pulling back phases if you need to. Um, every board has a different threshold, um, you know, and, and cities and counties have different thresholds of, of that. So just continue to watch.
Thank you very much. Thanks for all the information you pass on to us.
Let me, let me ask a question real quick of the board. Does, does every, is everyone aware of, um, what the city of Maryville has on their website about where, where they track the COVID statistics for the county every day? They have excellent, they have three excellent links. They're fabulous. And they're just quick, you can hit it and, you know, you can see a kind of a panel of different types of information. It's right on the front page of their website. Uh, we, we've got it linked off of ours also, um, there. Ari just put it in chat for y'all. But I think, I think that would be, it's a resource you should check out because it's, it's very good and very thorough, but still not, you're not getting inundated with numbers that makes sense.
I think the newspaper does an update every day too, which is really nice. It's one of the first things we look at.
Yeah.
Thank you very much. Let's, let's move on to, oh, anybody have any questions for Liz? I'm sorry. Okay, moving on, uh, just a quick update in old business on the Pavilion project. Uh, we listed in the, in your packet, a breakdown, uh, from Arter Enterprises, which is the contractor, general contractor that we talked to about costs, uh, in your spare time when you have it, just look through that. If there's anything at all that you see that you might want to add to the Pavilion, I'm gonna talk about this in the future, probably in January and give you a breakdown with pictures and, and things, but right now I'm not, we're not, not totally ready. But this is pretty much it with everything, everything that we could think of to put in, in this Pavilion and the restrooms. And I do want to go forward with this. Also talking to people about the, the SkyFi systems and wanting to go forward with that as fast as we can also. Okay, any question, any questions on that?
The tables, the, the tables are ordered. Just the, the.
All of them?
Two, the, the check went out, so they had to have payment, you know, to
Okay.
do them, but it's been done.
Can you refresh my memory? Did the Pavilion contract go out for bid or did we just?
No, it doesn't have to if it's pay, if it's paid for by private funds.
Okay.
Uh, and, and we're not, it's not come to the board for approval or anything. It's very much still in the.
We're just in the working stages.
Yeah, just working.
Just getting general information. I just wanted to share with the board what, what the file, what it looks like is gonna be above the final dollar amount. So you can take a look at that. Uh, there are still some things that we could add to it or we could take away from it. But it, but it, it does give you a, a general idea. And this, it does include the restrooms that would be there for the green belt. Okay, uh, any, any question, any other questions on that?
That was really just an FYI sheet. I think at the last meeting, people wanted to see it, so.
Okay, the, the next thing, and this was old business, we, we talked about it last week. I don't want to really kill a lot of time on it this week if you don't mind, and that's the holiday library schedule. This is the county schedule. If you look at that, it has the closure dates that the, for, for two thousand and twenty-one, that the county is going to be closed. The library is part of the county government and so uh, I want you to take a look at that and we need a vote on that, accepting it, that the library will be closed on those days. that the library will be closed on those days.
Yeah, I wanted to thank the staff for relabeling this and reworking this, you know, based on our conversation last month. It certainly, it certainly presents more effectively in my, in my view. And if you're ready for a motion, I motion to approve.
Okay, thank you, Kathy. I totally agree with you.
I second that motion.
Andy, we can't hear.
I'm sorry. I agree. Thank you. You taught me how to mute and unmute. Thanks for doing that. And that phone was two phones, two rooms away. So I don't know, I don't know who it was, but they were sure loud. We need a vote on this from the board approving the days that we would be closed. So do I hear a motion on that?
Yeah, a motion is second. We just need approval.
Yeah, we just need to vote.
Okay, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
Well, is there any discussion on it? Okay, hearing nothing. All in favor, would you say aye? Any opposed? Thank you. Motion passes. So that will be the days that the library is closed in 2021 in conjunction with the county. Now, let's move on to new business. The first, the first order up would be December's meeting. We, talking to Casey, feel that since normally there's a lot going on in December, we would not have a meeting. So if you all are in agreement with that, I know there's not that much going on this year as in past. But if you would agree that we do not have a board meeting next month, would like to have you say yes. Anybody opposed to not having a board? Let's say, is anybody opposed to not having a board meeting next month? Hearing no one, then we will not have a meeting. And our next meeting will be a work session, which is the next thing we can talk about under new business. And that's a budget work session to talk about. And hopefully it will not be an all-day session. We'll try to, try to do it in the morning and do it in the little building in the front of the library with its own parking area and we'll get, and so can we do that on a Zoom basis or does it have to be?
Well, it, it would be, we can do a combination. If there is somebody that just either is not comfortable or, because this is not an open, I mean, the workshop is for the board and the Friends and the foundation representative and then Angene and I, because it is just a workshop.
I'd really like to see us do it in person.
Yeah, it would be, but if someone is sick or they feel, we can bring them in, they just aren't going to be sitting there for a long time. You know, because it'll be nine to, I think I said nine to one, nine to noon, something like that.
Nine to 12.
Nine to 12. Yeah, and I thought maybe I would, you know, make sure that there was some food.
But we have a lot.
I'm going to get Bruce. Bruce, will you bake cookies for us?
I'll bake cookies. We have a lot to talk about. It's going to be a really tough year. And we really need to get into, into expenses. Okay, what's the date, what's the date on the meeting?
January 9th.
January 9th from 9 to 12.
Everybody have that?
Yep.
Okay. All right. I don't know what this is, Friends bathroom proposal?
Yes, the Friends want to build a bathroom downstairs and that is not us. That is Friends and Board. So I said they needed to come and talk with y'all to find out how, what they needed to do next and get, you know, direction from y'all on that.
Bruce, you want to talk about that?
I'll be glad to. We, we're currently in a situation where we'll have people and with eBay having more people on site, we're having more and more people downstairs and it's becoming very inconvenient to not have nearby bathroom facilities or hand washing facilities. So we've talked about this a few months. We would like to go ahead and make a proposal to put a, for, for us at least a single bathroom with a hand wash station in the basement for the use of the Friends. We currently use the bathrooms available to us upstairs in the library. There, and there's one that's been identified for our use at the elevator. But we would like to build one. In fact, we've already put aside a small chunk of money to do that. And I, Angene and I have been talking about this off and on. So I guess the next step is for me to put together a proposal for the library or the board to look at, to go ahead and pursue this.
Bruce is, I don't know if you've researched it or not, but is there, is there water in the lower level available? And what about sewers?
Well, there's water right by the elevator.
Yeah, Chris Soro knows all this. Chris Soro, and he should be involved in this.
Well, that is what I told him. I thought that the next step, if the board approves them, you know, moving forward to, to look at the logistics for this, that would be to meet with Chris. I just, I just didn't feel like I should make that decision. I thought the
Yeah, I feel very strongly about this. Chris has done all of this research and background information. He knows where the pipes are and, you know, you know what I'm saying, Bruce, he knows all this. And, and I feel like if we decide to carve this out and, and support you all doing this, that it needs to be very thoughtful in sort of a larger picture. In other words, we don't just want to be willy-nilly about where we place it and all that. It ought to be done in such a way that it doesn't interfere with the possibility of future plans for the lower level.
Well, Casey has already rejected putting a porta can right outside.
I don't understand why she would do that.
But Chris is really good to work with Bruce. And he, and he may need a fee to work with you, but it won't be much. I mean, he's very generous to us. But I think he's done a lot of the work and probably could provide you at a reasonable fee, you know, some good counsel on this and help you formulate that formal proposal that you come back with.
Yeah, and I, you know, I would like to see that wherever we put the bathroom, it aligns with where the Friends space will eventually be. You know, and I think, Chris, there was a program plan and I don't think that, that would change at all, regardless of what the board decided to do in the basement. That chunk was carved out for the Friends, so.
Okay, I will.
I'm certainly in favor of the bathroom, but I am concerned about putting it where it would not be able to be removed in case of something would happen in the future, in two to three years or five years. Who knows what we'd be looking at?
Yeah, which is why we want Chris to, to be part of it, so.
But I don't want to tie it, I don't think we should tie it into his original plan.
You don't?
I don't, I really don't. If you have to then move it, I don't want, I don't think we should be incurring that kind of expense.
I think if it's, if it can be lined up with the comprehensive plan that has been, you know, the overall plan and if it can go into it, you know, that would reduce the risk of having to move it. So personally, I'm like, it would be nice. If we're going to put any funds into, into the building, let it be something that's going to be permanent and something that aligns with the long-term vision that we have for the library, just my.
And I think
I agree.
Chris will come in and he'll look at it and he will put all of that, you know, the pros and cons and whatever proposal that he does. So, you know, because he's very thorough. So, so I was right, Bruce. Going to Chris is the next step.
Okay, I'll do that. Thank you.
That's great. Thank you. All right, the next thing is Friends, Friends funding request?
Nope.
What is that?
No, nothing. We don't have anything.
Okay, all right.
We couldn't think of anything to ask for money for this month.
Talked of the bathroom.
Come on.
Just kidding. But, yeah, no.
All right. How about, and I know the foundation had no funding request also.
No funding request.
So that kind of wraps it up. Does anybody have anything that they want to bring up before we ask to adjourn? But I can't believe it's 6:30 and it's dark outside. It makes me
You're right.
So disappointing.
Will, a fortune doesn't start till seven. I have 30 minutes.
Okay, everyone, take a long look at the, at the meetings dates coming up. Maryville City Council meeting should be a very interesting meeting if anybody, anybody wants to go to that one with electing new officers for the city of Maryville. And the county is always fun to go to in the dawn. So if anybody wants to come and visit with Don, pay attention to those dates. And I'll take a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Don't move.
Do I hear a second? Anyone opposed?
You need to say something, Don?
No, she's seconding.
No, I was seconding.
She gave us the two there. Thank you very much. Y'all have a great Thanksgiving. Stay safe and healthy.
Merry Christmas and all that good stuff.
That's right. We will see you until January. So everybody stay safe, be healthy, be with friends and family. And God bless everyone.
Thank you. Bye, guys.